Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God. All right. Next up is public comments and announcements. I have a list of public comments. So first off, there's a meet and greet at the convention center to welcome our new CVB director, Blake Henry. It'll be from four thirty to six thirty tomorrow. Please show up and get an opportunity to meet him. Next up, I was supposed to do this last meeting and I did not. Food truck lawsuit. There was a press release that said district. In the unanimous decision, thirteenth District Court of Appeals has decided in favor of the city of South Padre Island and the lawsuit styled Surf Vibe versus City of South Padre Island, commonly referred to as a food truck case. The court dismissed the plaintiff's case, which claimed that the city's food truck ordinance regulations were unconstitutional. The Court of Appeals ruled that the trial judge committed an error in denying the city's plea of jurisdiction and the city's requested and dismissed the case. Kind of paraphrase real quick. The court ruled that the plaintiff did not present evidence to refute the presumption that their ordinance is constitutional. To present evidence that the ordinance violates their substantive due course of law rights under the Texas Constitution. That's kind of the short version of it. All right, next we'll move into, there's a couple of items on the agenda, which one of them is regarding short term rentals. Tonight, we will not be having any discussion regarding banning short term rentals. So that's not what this is about tonight. If you are here to discuss about the short term rentals or noise ordinance, you can hold your comments where those items are being presented and we will have a moment when the public would like to, or have an opportunity to speak on it. If they, when we open that item, if the public would like to stand over here to the right, we'll be there to recognize that. Next up, the state has downgraded the level of emergency for COVID from a level two to a level three. There's five levels in the state of emergency, so it's still an increasing emergency. It's just not level one or level two now. It's kind of like DEFCON five versus DEFCON one. Next up, I want to say thank you to Debbie and all the staff that participated in the July fourth parade. It was a great success and we really appreciate all the people who came out there for that. Then I'd also like to say thank you to all the police, fire, EMS, and lifeguards for their hard work on this busy weekend and kudos to keeping the bridge open almost ninety percent of the time. There was no traffic this weekend and everything flew, you know, the boulevard was open and moving, so that was good to see. Laguna Boulevard project, we're having to look at doing some changes because limestone is no longer available. And so we were working on a substitution using Caliche. So that's kind of the holdup with that right now. Then we're going to pull items number five point four, five point seven, and five point eight. We're pulling five point seven because we've had a long conversation today with Hanson Group and they're going to be submitting the most recent revisions to.
What?
Maybe I got the wrong deal here. Oh, I'm sorry. We're five eight, we're going to pull five eight and five nine. Regarding the Hanson deal, they're going to be submitting the revised project plans illustrating the current proposed project and updated biological assessments reflecting the changes to the project manager tomorrow. And then we're pulling five point nine because we only have, we have two council members missing. We have two council members that are sustaining and so we're going to pull it until we have four council members that are here to discuss and vote on the item. Other than that, then I'm going to hand it over to.
Five point four, did you mention?
I did mention five point four.
Sorry.
Yes. Five point four, five point eight, five point nine. And I'm going to hand this over to Councilman Rico to make the announcement on the EDA grant for the historical museum, since he was basically leading the charge on this item on the council level.
That was Mr. Frankie led the charge. I just want to say congratulations to Dennis Frankie for receiving a one point five million dollar EDA grant for the construction of the new historic museum. It's going to be a great amenity for the island and we're excited to get that project going. Wanted to thank the mayor, Councilman Schwartz, and Ken for also helping and supporting that project. Tied to the back of that project, Mr. Wilson and Sanchez have been working on two pickleball courts back there. Those should be done this week. Next week?
Next week.
All right, so is there, lots of seconds. We have pickleball and a historic museum going in. Good job, guys.
All right, anyone else from council like to make any public comments or announcements? All right, hearing none. Anyone from staff like to make any public count?
Debbie, thanks for your help too, I'm sorry.
Okay, anyone from the public like to make any public comments or announcements? All right, we're closing public comments. Now we'll move over to item number four, which is approved consent agenda. Is there a motion to?
I, maybe I wait till it's first and second because I have a question about item four point four.
Well, the only way you're going to be able to question it is if we pull item four point four and move it into a regular, an item to discuss. So is that what you're wanting to do? Okay, is Rodrigo here?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So is there a motion to approve a consent agenda four one through four three and four five through four eight?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up, we're going to talk about item number four point four, which is approved resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero seven designating the chief financial officer Rodrigo Jimenez to calculate the no new revenue and voter approval tax rate. If you could explain that it's just kind of part of the state.
Well, I do understand. I guess the comment I just wanted to make is just to make sure we're not raising the tax rate.
No, this is just for, correct me if I'm wrong, Rodrigo, but this is just, this is required that he has to calculate these two rates and he has to present it to us, but we have to.
Our workshop that we had the other day, it's the same tax rate that we were talking about.
Correct.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah. He's going to have to present both rates and then we have to formally vote.
Yes, I understand. But I just want to make sure that it's the same rate we were talking about.
He's going to actually propose two rates though, because he has to calculate both of them and then he's going to propose them to us and then we vote on which one we're going to go with.
All right, thank you.
All right, so is there a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two dash zero seven designated the chief financial officer, Robert Jimenez, to calculate the no new revenue and the voter approval tax rate?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we'll move on to regular agenda. First up is item number five point one, which is discussion and action to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three annual budget for the South Padre Island Economic Development Corp. Darla.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Darla LaPere, I'm the executive director of the Economic Development Corporation and I'm here to request approval of our annual budget twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. So I'm just going to go through it quickly. The revenue is our sales tax, that's where we get our revenue from. And we are budgeting one point three million dollars. I got that number from Rodrigo in the finance department and that's based on his projections. So, and then we've got some bank interest and the rent from the birding center. So that brings our total revenue to one million, three hundred and thirteen thousand. And on the expenses, we have the administrative expenses and then the operating expenses are pretty much the same this year on the operating expenses. The main change is on page two, promotions. We are going to increase the amount in promotions by twelve thousand dollars. The board felt it was important that we be more involved with the community sponsoring some events and things, so that's the change there. On the birding center expenses, we went up ten thousand for insurance. We went up fifteen thousand, nine hundred and two for the facility maintenance fund. That is for major repairs. We did have one repair recently, one of the air conditioning units went out. We aren't really following the study exactly anymore because it just, the timing of the repairs weren't happening, the replacement and all that kind of thing. But we're still referring back to it and then we add, we just are putting money in that pot.
You're just, you're just building.
So we, building a pot.
A reserve so that when, like if they said the parking lot needed to be done in ten years and it's going to be fifteen years, you've got the money there. It's just you're not doing it because it doesn't need to be done.
Right, right. And then the next line item is more preventative maintenance, the elevator quarterly bill and things like that and some, according to our operating agreement, we do take care of doors and windows, so that's what that amount is. The next one's the biggie, that is our transfer to debt service, the bond payment for the birding center. The next year, we're budgeting three hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty. Did go down a little bit as we're paying off the interest and we have more principal, so that's why that went down a little bit. And then projects, okay, the first one is the Kaufman entrepreneurship course and that is where ten, we send ten business owners or entrepreneurs through this course that UTRGB teaches, we're keeping that the same. Sand dollars for success, we are going to be doing three, we are proposing to do three rounds next year, or three, reward three existing and three businesses, so we tripled the budget on that. We put in the same amount, fifty thousand for the artificial reef, thirty thousand for the art incubator, that stays the same. We did double the facade improvement grants. Fishing's future, we did put some more money for fishing's future. I think you all know, we did help with the I can boat and we think it's, we're going to need to help in with some more later. And then we kept the same amount for the marina, we're calling it Marina slash Marine Park because that's what the grant writers telling us we need to call it for grants to set us apart, so we're going to keep that the same for now. We don't really know what our expenses are going to be on that. And then, so what we do is to balance the budget, we put the remaining in designated other projects, which is two hundred and, two hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven. And that is for things like, you know, the reef came and asked us for some more money recently and we were able to get it out of our other projects. But it's things that'll come up during the year that we don't necessarily anticipate.
And we might have some stuff come up with a marine park if it moves.
Right.
In positive direction, et cetera.
Maybe some matches for the grants and stuff. So as you can see, the majority of the increase in the sales tax is going to that, to our projects, which is where it should be. So I think that's pretty much short and sweet. Does anybody have any questions?
Can you talk about the sand dollar program real quick for people that don't understand that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So we just recently finished a round of it and so what it is, it's a business plan competition and any business can apply that's on the island. And we now give out twenty-five thousand if you're an existing business and ten thousand for new or startups. And you're considered new if you're two years or less in business. So recently, and I haven't put it on social media yet because I just got all the agreements signed back, signed by the businesses that won and I've got them all returned to me, so now we can make an official announcement. But we, Coconut Jacks and SPI Sessions tied on the score sheets, which is pretty amazing when we have seven judges and there's five or six categories on each score sheet and it was an exact tie on the written and exact tie on the oral presentation. So we're able to, we're going to help both of them. And then I think Coconut Jacks is asking for some modifications to their entrance. You can pretty much ask for anything that, as long as it's going to increase your sales and retain or create jobs. So they need more street presence, all the other businesses have kind of built out to the streets, so that's going to give them some more presence. And then SPI Sessions is going to use it for equipment and they're also going to be starting to do their surf lessons out of some hotels. So they'll have that going on. And then the new, the one was, there's, there's a Padre Island castle that they're building up on the north end of the island and they asked us for two thousand dollars for a website and they actually scored really well on their presentation. So they just, they're getting two thousand and then the art lounge, which is a new art business down by Sea Ranch Marina, she won eight thousand. So what we did was we took that ten thousand and did two and eight. So that's what we're doing for them, so. And we're, I'm not sure exactly when the next round will be, but I'm thinking September. I'm going to revise the guidelines a little bit and then I'll do another round of it.
That's great.
Thanks.
She had everything over there.
If anybody's interested in, they can contact me, Darla LaPere with the EDC.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three annual budget for the South Padre Island Economic Development Corp. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is item number five point two, which I think most of y'all are here for, which is discussion of possible action regarding short term rental registrations and compliance required by chapter eleven, article seven of the city code of ordinance. Again, if you were here to speak on it, please stand up over here in a few minutes, we're going to let kind of Ken talk for a second or whatever and maybe some other council members might have something to add. But again, we're not here to look at banning short term rentals or anything like that that you read on the book of face or whatever out there. Facebook, whatever.
Book of face.
Yeah.
That's kind of sounds like Schwartz.
Sometimes, there's people out there that think it's the gospel. So anyway, Ken, I'll let you start this out and then we'll, because you're the one who proposed it, then we'll open it up to the audience to make some suggestions or whatever they may want to do and then we'll have some discussion and if we feel like there's any action that's going to happen, we'll probably allow the audience to speak some more on the items depending on what may or may not be coming out of it. Ken, go ahead.
Okay, first, my phone started blowing up, I guess about one o'clock that I, these were on there at my BS, we were going to limit, curtail, cut out, whatever. And we traced back the source and you all be amazed who started it. The second thing is, over the last few weeks, I've had six or seven folks approach me in as number of weeks about parties, late night parties, the number of folks at the parties. Any of you know me? I'm one of those that says, next time they have a party, call me. Well, they, they did. One night it was about eleven fifteen, eleven thirty, went out, checked twenty, twenty-five people, police came, cut the music, no incidents, everybody went home. Now, the one fifteen AM on Sunday, about two weeks later, there was over a hundred people. And it reminded me of spring break in the eighties and nineties. It was wild, just, it was just nuts. But again, police handled it, everybody went home. They, actually, that, that party broke up then, they didn't, they didn't continue. Some of the questions were the music. And I was thinking that the city in two thousand, I believe eighteen, had passed an ordinance after ten thirty at night, that there, there would be a noise ordinance and they would do, go out and take a decimal and if the person was not in the rental pool, that they would be contacted the owner. I found out that that's different. And then the number of people per unit, three bedroom, three bath, four people per bedroom, twelve people, and you've got thirty people. Well, I find out that there's really nothing on the books on that. So I checked with Legal and checked with Randy and they may want to expand a little bit.
Well, I, the, the, we don't have an occupancy ordinance ourselves, but the state property code has one and it's three adults per bedroom and.
And there's some out there that, I guess it was in the packet, I read part of it and the cities where it's very, very restrictive. Well, you know, we're, come on, folks, we're, the residents and then we've got the, the commercial, we've, the visitors and whatnot, we've all got to coincide and we have to coincide together. And so when I went to Randy and Randy said, talk to Ed, and that's kind of what brought us to this point.
Okay. Well, the mayor mentioned the property code has an occupancy limit. Our city ordinances have no occupancy limits regarding short term rentals. Under the property code though, someone would have to actually file a lawsuit or the city could file a lawsuit to enforce the occupancy. You know, in, at the mayor's request, I created a list of bullet points that other cities are enacting to kind of combat the deterioration of what they called neighborhood, single family neighborhoods and we're only talking about single family areas basically. And they, they ranged from prohibiting short term rentals, which I would not advise. I think that would be, there is some litigation going on about that. I don't think that would be allowed under current law, to just strengthening some city ordinances, including the noise ordinance and occup, or setting occupancy limits to two or three people per bedroom. And also, Mr. Matters, there is no, no curfew for music. I mean, people would have to call the PD and they'd go down there and I think PD has generally been very good about responding and, you know, basically wanting to get compliance. So from total prohibition again, which would not be recommending to just strengthening some city ordinances regarding noise and occupancy, no commercial activity and limiting the amount of people that can be present at a short term rental, again, in, especially in single family residential areas, are some of the things that other cities, including resort cities. Corpus Christi has actually banned short term rentals out North Padre Island. Dallas is having problems, Austin, I mean, it's all over, but to answer your question specifically, there's no curfew on noise and there's no occupancy limits on the amount of people under the city codes.
And, and for this item, we're, A, we're going to limit the discussion to short term rental registration and compliance. If we want to talk about, well, when we do, if we're going to talk about noise, we're going to move that into, that's, that's a separate line item because noise doesn't just get with a short term rental. There's people who own houses that could have major parties and whatever, and so that's, that's the reason that we broke it off is to not, you know, there are certain issues that, that come out of short term rentals, but then there are some issues that apply to everybody. And so that's the reason why we broke these two out as items. And to follow up on, on what Ed said is, the reason I'd asked him to put together a list of what other municipalities are going through, what the problems are, is to help, or what their, what their may, maybe solutions or whatever it might be. It's just so that we're all educated when we can come up here and we have, we're speaking and listening and everything else, we get to see what other communities do. I will now let Tom Goodman, oh.
I have a comment.
Okay. Go ahead. Go right ahead, real quick.
Well, just that, looking at the packet, my only concern was, and then Ed mentioned Corpus, so that's good, but my concern is Mesquite, Texas is not a resort area, tourist town, so us looking at their comparisons on what they're doing on rental restrictions, I don't think is a good comparison because they're a first home market. So I just wanted to make that comment, that if we're going to look at cities, we need to be looking apples to apples, not apples to oranges, looking at other similar resort area, second home, short term rental markets.
The reason why Mesquite got pulled into this is, A, I was just shocked that Mesquite, Texas would even have an issue with short term rentals, to be honest. And B, there was an article in D Magazine in which they were talking about Dallas's problem with short term rentals and they mentioned in the article that both South Padre Island and now Mesquite were trying to get ahead of the rental problems and this and that and why they created it. And so it was put in there because that article presented that.
A lot of first home markets are having, they're trying to talk about rental restrictions, so they're, I mean, it's a lot of cities in Texas that are, but I just wanted to make that comment. If we're going to look at it, we need to be looking at like kind of.
That's why I mentioned Corpus, who's actually banned short term rentals at North Padre.
Yeah. Anyway. Getting back to this, this is kind of going off how, how we were going to try to, or how I was planning on trying to do this, Tom has been sitting up here for about five minutes, so.
Tom likes to wait. Tom, Tom, Tom's a waiter. He's a waiter, he's from San Anita, he likes to wait.
Tom is here and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you're here to speak for Vacation Rental Management Association that you all have presented here before. And we appreciate the fact that you all are doing an organization, trying to get ahead of this curve as well, because as we brought it up in a previous meeting, you know, it's going to take everybody working together to try to figure out how to make the best of the quality of life for our visitors, our guests and our residents. And, and our residents are our priority as well, so. We're a tourist city, but we have people who live here and we need to make sure that the people who live here aren't struggling through life. So anyway, if you could state your name for the record and proceed, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, Tom Goodman, local and owner of Padre Island Rentals, been on the business, been on the island for over forty years doing business, also part of CVB, on the, on the CVB, also president of the Vacation Rental Managers Association, which we've just formed this last year. We have a letter, first of all, thank you very much for bringing up this issue, really. I, I think this is important, I'm really glad to hear these things being brought up. I have a letter here that we, we sent to all of you, mayor, council members, chief police, city manager, fire chief and CVB director. I'd like to just go over that quickly if I can. Last summer, a group of vacation rental managers formed the Vacation Rental Manager Association of South Padre Island. Because we recognize the challenge presented of balancing the quality of life concerns of residents with the tourism industry that feeds the island. As professional vacation rental manage, property managers, we recognize the delete, the need to deliver exceptional guest hospitality to the visitors of South Padre Island while providing property owner satisfaction and being good island neighbors. Tourism and real estate are the two primary industries driving the economy on South Padre Island. Short term vacation rentals are of critical value to both. Short term vacation rentals provide more than half of all accommodations for guests visiting the island and contribute more than half of the local hotel occupancy and venue tax. The ability to generate an income stream from short term vacation rentals as an offset to the cost of property ownership allows vacation rental property owners to invest in second homes on South Padre. These property owners, who most live elsewhere, have a substantial contribution to the local hotel occupancy tax, property taxes and the local economy. As the council considers issue regarding vacation rentals, we would like to offer help from our association. Several of our members served on the task force that created the hot compliance plan and the short term vacation rental registration ordinance. That ordinance was initially drafted to make environment enforcement relatively easy. For example, the city does not need to prove that someone is renting to enforce it, they need only to establish that it has been quote advertised for rental. A simple guest rental agreement with appropriate enforcement and eviction language recommended by then-police chief Randy Smith was developed and published on the city website for rental property owners to use. The ordinance was also designated to provide the community, designed to provide the community with a database of vacation rental properties, those responsible for them, requiring a twenty-four seven contact with when in one hour reach and penalties for enforcement. The database was intended to provide neighbors a means for reporting quote unquote bad actors. Our association recently requested vacation rental neighbor complaints from the police department and learned that a category for vacation rental complaints is needed. When looking at the hot, the hot collections, the past task force discussed three groups of vacation rental owners, those who are aware that need to collect and, and remit hocks, but hot, but refuse not to, those who are aware and complied, and those who are simply not aware. By a, by a mass mail communication with all property owners of record on South Padre Island and enforcement of the STRR ordinance, good progress was made with increasing hot tax compliance and collections. When the record, with the record, sales of properties on the island in the past two years, there is a whole new group of owners who may or may not be aware of the ordinances that apply to short term vacation rentals. For example, we are, we, many are renting properties by, you know, through Airbnb and may not be aware that Airbnb does not collect local hot or revenue tax. It only collects and remits state hot and leaves a collection, a remittance of local taxes to the property owner. But the, but the communication to that property owner, Airbnb is not. But the, but the communication to that property owner, Airbnb is not clear. We believe that we can help our city leaders in finding the balance of preventing issues before they arise. The primary goals of the VRMA, uh, VRMA SPI are in alignment with this. To increase public awareness of the value to the local economy and professionally manage vacation rentals through effective community and realtor communication. To establish professional standards and become the example for others engaged in short-term vacation rentals by holding our members to a higher standard and responding to community concerns and complaints. To hold irresponsible vacation, another point, to hold irresponsible vacation owners and managers accountable to the community and increase HOT compliance by full, by, by all short-term vacation rentals by assisting the city and reviewing, and reviewing the existing STRR ordinance and making recommendations for reasonable enforcements, new or amended ones. To help direct island marketing efforts through recommendations to sustain and build on the, the recent increase in tourism for providing the accommodation desired and deliver an exceptional guest experience, please let us know how we can help. One of the worst things signed by the board. One of the worst things I, things I have to deal with are complaints from guests when I get bad reviews because the neighbor's making too much noise. We understand these problems. We want to be part of solution. We're simply asking for a place at the table here.
And we appreciate that and thank you. I will say that, that, you know, we did put this on the agenda in April and we did send out notice, you know, to all the new owners because that was a concern that we had brought up as a board. And then I'd had Rodrigo do some research. And it looks like from August, from June 21 to August 21, we were only a 3% discrepancy in money collected versus what the state collected. So that's a pretty good number. And considering, you know, that's our highest peak time of the year. I mean, of course, we want it to be zero.
Right.
But, you know, 3% is, is a pretty decent number during our highest time period. Rodrigo is looking into February 22 to April 22 right now to try to see if, if what that area is and then whether or not it's maintaining that same average. But because of reporting times and everything, that kind of gets a little bit.
Yeah, I, I want to, I want to see that those taxes are collected by the others and paid as well because a 17% discrepancy in rates by one person being charged and another not.
Right.
I don't want to compete with that.
Yeah, no, but, but I was happy to see a 3% discrepancy. That was much smaller than I thought it was going to be.
Yeah, very good.
So next up, I got, you got Will Greenwood behind you. Will, if you could state your name and your business or whatever, and however that might work.
Oh, of course. All right. Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Will Greenwood. I own SPI Rentals, which is a local vacation rental company here on South Padre Island. I'm also involved in the newly-formed Vacation Rental Managers Association of SPI. Councilman Medders, thank you for putting this on the agenda this evening. I understand the city council has gotten several complaints from local residents. And, you know, we need to find a solution to these problems and work together for them. I think everyone in this room wants to be able to have a fair balance between tourism and, you know, a good quality of life for all residents. So I think we can start working on that this afternoon. So South Padre Island has 2,800 local residents, give or take, I believe. And we also have 2,600 to 2,800 registered vacation rentals. So if you think about that, it's almost one vacation rental per resident on the island. So we are truly a vacation destination. I mean, there's no denying that at all. The current short-term rental ordinance in Chapter 11, Article 7, was carefully thought out years ago by committee members in 2015 and 2017. The police chief, which at the time was Randy, you know, city manager Susan Guthrie, vacation rental managers, real estate brokers, local residents, they were all involved in making it. And we have a good ordinance. The current short-term rental ordinance states a property owner will be fined up to $500 per offense per day. The ordinance references a lot of compliance items a vacation rental owner can be fined for. One of the major ones is that the property representative must be present at the property with rental agreement in hand with, within one hour of the city contacting them for any rental issue. The ordinance also covers a range of compliance items, including registration permits, improper marketing, noise and loud, noise and loud disturbances, and more. This allows the city a lot of avenues to issue fines currently. One question I had was, you know, how many fines has the city of South Padre issued to date? You know, because we've had this, I mean, just this year, give or take, like, you know, have we issued any fines at all for property owners if we've had complaints?
I don't, I don't.
No, I didn't know if anyone here knew city staff here right now.
If anyone knows that answer right up to a fact right now.
Okay.
And I think we also try to do more policing of y'all quiet it down versus issuing tickets because we, we're trying, we as a city, we, we understand too the nature of us being a tourist destination and it's, and we don't want to leave a bad taste in someone's mouth about their experience being here. And so we try to work through that situation to, to keep everything kind of going. And so I, I just don't know what that, that number would be. Just to throw it out there real quick.
No, that's fine. You're going to put this in perspective, I mean, our vacation rental company hosts around 6,000 reservations a year. I've never received a fine from the city for any, you know, short-term rental violations at all. And when I saw this agenda item, I called, you know, several other vacation rental property owners, see if they'd receive fines or emails, anything like that. Answer was no on every single company. I pretty much covered, I think, every company on the island. So from what I've seen, I mean, the city does not have an ordinance issue. Like, I think we've got an enforcement issue. So let's say you made the speed limit, you know, on Padre Boulevard 30 miles an hour, and the police officers never gave tickets. Well, over time, people are going to start going 35 miles an hour, and then 40 miles an hour, and then 50 miles an hour, and so on. But at that time, you don't have a meeting to discuss lowering the speed limit again. You have a meeting to discuss enforcing the current speed limit and start ticketing offenders. Holding owners accountable for problematic rental properties is the main problem we have in our city today. I'm not sure what specific department, you know, this compliance should fall under, but I think this is something we can all work towards together. Okay? So here's some recommendations to move forward on things. You know, number one, we need to enforce the current short-term rental ordinance and fine offending property owners. Don't be scared to find. If we have bad actors out there, we want them fined. I think these residents want them fined. 500 a day per offense is a big fine. It is. And I think if you guys start doing that and enforcing that, we're not going to have all these issues we're having now. And can I think you alluded to that last meeting, you know? And it's nothing against the police department because that's not their job is finding, like, but, you know, maybe having a position in the city that, you know, calls SPI Rentals or PI Rentals or Padre Getaways or Coastal Lifestyles, or all the other companies out there, Blue Ocean. And it's just, you know, we don't get any feedback on like, what, what's going on out there if there is a problem. And a guest is definitely not going to call us and go, hey, you know, we messed up last night, the police were over here. I mean, that's just not going to happen. So, and then just starting incident tracking and community outreach. I think the police department has started, you know, doing that as of late April. They have started doing that, which is fantastic. But designating or hiring someone at the city to contact property representatives when a violation occurs is going to be key to getting this problem under control. It just is.
And, and not interrupt real quick, but one thing I want to add is, and one of our problems that we brought up for the April meeting is that nine times out of 10, when someone calls to complain.
The complaint is gone, right?
They, the complainant does not want to be contacted to fill out a report to proceed with finding. And so it's like, you're calling the police to show up there, but I don't want, I don't want to be involved afterwards. And so one thing that we do need to figure out is how to circumvent the complaint side. If we can't get people to be on the record complaining, then we need to figure out how to make it to where we don't have to have a complainant to sign a document in order to turn around and contact the management company. And I think like you, when we started this in April, I think you learned kind of that, that we could actually find the management company, not just the people who are there. And, and when Claudine met with, with you all, or at least, at least with your company. And so, yes, that's, we agree and understand that enforcement is a big issue. And, you know, even though Mesquite's not a vacation destination, one thing that you can learn about other cities, what they do, is they made the violations a criminal charge. And by doing that, it's not like you're going to get arrested, but then you don't need the complainant, it becomes like a speeding ticket. You got the radar, you got it. It's not that I picked up the phone and said, hey, this guy's speeding. You catch him speeding, but now I have to sign a piece of paper to say, hey, give him a ticket. And so that's, that's one of the areas of why we bring some stuff here to discuss because we do understand and appreciate the fact that we're trying to work this circle as best we can and, and we're finding some variables in our issues of enforcement because of how this original ordinance was drafted. And so that's why, again, we have these discussions.
Mayor, I could, I could make some comments about that, about the need for a complaint and when we talk about the noise ordinance.
Yep. That'd be a perfect time for it because I think that's our biggest issue is the noise ordinance. And, and we can get into some of the minor ones. But the biggest issue we're talking about in regards is quality of life is noise.
Right. Yep. Yeah, if that gets changed, I mean, I think that'll be, you know, probably a good roadblock removed from the city so you can actually start finding people then. Because, like, I'm going to guess right now, guys, there hasn't been one fine maybe, you know, since we started this. And I mean, we put that 500 a day in there. Like, I was on that committee years ago and it's like, we put that in there because we were serious about this, you know? And we understand to protect neighborhoods on South Padre, and we're a very small destination. So I understand, you know, if there's problems, you know, we need to be able to find people. You know, the number three, you know, lastly, just educating the public. And I think the city did send something out as far as a letter maybe, but, I mean, ideally, I mean, I'm going to call for you guys just to do it to all property tax accounts on the island. I don't know what that number is. I think it might be around 10,000, something like that maybe. But, I mean, I think that's well worth, you know, sending out a direct mail campaign and letting every single owner know because it's not just the owners that are registered. Like, I want to go after the owners that are not registered, that are not paying, like Tom said, that 17% tax. And so we just need to inform everybody. And we have had so much real estate sold on this island in the past two years, it is nuts. And so it's, you have a lot of uninformed people, I think. And if you don't go on myspi.org, I mean, the, I, I would think probably 90% of the new owners don't even go on myspi.org. I mean, it just is what it is. You know, like, the residents know about it, but it's just, putting it on that website is not enough. Like, we need to get out there in their mailboxes and just get aggressive with it. But anyway, so after implementing these items, you know, we just spoke about, if the city council would like to take further action and strengthen the ordinance, then I do recommend forming a short-term rental committee to analyze the current ordinance. You know, we can work with city staff on improvements. I think that's the most logical move forward, you know, if we're going to go in that direction. You know, as far as occupancy, I mean, I think we're really early in the game for the city of South Padre to start dictating rental occupancy. And, you know, three people in a bedroom is, I mean, you can't even put two twin bunks up.
Three adults is what the ordinance is.
Okay.
It's not.
So it's even like.
It's 18 and over is what the property code of the state is. It says no more than three adults per the number of bedrooms. That is written by, but they don't, they, they, they refer to an adult as someone over the 18 and older.
Okay.
That's, and that's, that's already in the Texas property code. Okay? That's not.
Yeah, no, and that's, yeah.
And that's, so that's state law throughout the whole.
But I can have like, you know, five adults and 20 kids behind me, and I guess I'm not breaking state property code, you know?
Foster houses.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I don't know why they do it, but just, I mean, in general, I just think we need to work on that. I don't think we should be regulating that because right now, we're not even enforcing the current ordinance on the books. And if we can get those fines in place and start finding these problematic homeowners, that's the first step. Then if we need to strengthen that ordinance, let's get a rental committee together and start doing that before we start talking about occupancies. Because, I mean, it's, and it's not like we're trying to stress out properties. That's the last thing we want to do. I mean, we manage a lot of high-end properties, and that's the last thing we're going to do is stress out a property with over occupancy. But at the same time, a lot of these properties are very large floor plans that can handle more than just three people per bedroom. And I know you said adults or whatever it is, but just, we need to keep that in mind. And, you know, we're not about, you know, getting too noisy and anything like that, but just, you know, I think we need to enforce the regulation on the books. After that, if we need to do more regulation, that's fine, but let's enforce what we have, take a pause, see how things go, and if we need to enforce more, then we can. So, but anyway, I want to thank all council members for considering our solutions and working with the local residents, property owners, and lodging companies to help solve this problem. So thank you very much.
All right. Rod, you're up next. In the sanctity of time, if we don't, you know, when one person says something and another person says the same thing, if we get 20 people all saying the same thing, you know, that, that just kind of draws that out. But if you, so if anybody has anything different to add than what was said, then I appreciate it. So Rod, go ahead.
Did you have something else? Okay. Rod Hunter, Blue Ocean Vacation Rentals. I'm also on the board of the newly-formed VRMA Association. I just, because the item number also addresses registrations, I wanted to bring to your attention, I don't know if you know this, several months ago, the city gave that to Avenue.
That's not several months ago. That's been a long time.
Well, two months ago, three months ago, I was able to log on to that account through the city website. And I could change, modify, I could create a new one, I could, I could renew. I can't do that anymore. I can't do it through the city. That's been given over to Avenue.
Well, I think we were just a hyperlink at that point.
Well, it's been a, my, my account that I had, that I was using to log in through the hyperlink, whatever, through the city website, no longer works. And I call Avenue and they have no clue. And I come here and talk to your girl and she's not much help either. So I just wanted to let you, I don't know if you know that, I have expired.
I did not know that, but I do have Rodrigo behind you, who's going to come up here and maybe help explain.
I have expired registrations that I can't renew and stuff like that. So that's been a.
But that's why we have these meetings and we have people here that, that understand it. So we're going to allow Rodrigo to maybe help explain that a little bit.
Yeah, yes, mayor council. We, when we implemented this ordinance a long time ago, probably five, six years ago, we set this ordinance and we did everything in-house. Right now, we have about 2,400 registrations. I know there's a lot, not a lot, but there's more registrations, properties that need to be registered. That's why we reach out to this company because they have the people to achieve, you know, as close as 100% registrations. Right now, based on an estimate that, you know, based on different websites, providing a number of advertisements, we think we're about 80, 85% of registration for all advertisements, but we want to reach to 100%. And that's why we contact Avenue and we, I acknowledge there has been some issues with the website. I checked it today and it's working, and you can check all the properties. We have received some complaints about not being user-friendly. So we're working with the company to make it easier for everybody. And tomorrow, we have also a meeting with them to have a timeline where we're going to start, they're going to start searching and contacting all the properties that they're not registered. So they have more manpower than one person handling everything, probably half of their time. So that's what we're doing, so.
So Rodrigo, I think what Rod was alluding to is that it's difficult for people to register their properties. Is that not so? Can you visit with them about that to see if that can be resolved?
Yeah, I mean, and, yeah, we're available 24/7. They can call, they can email, they can stop by. In fact, the girl that, that he's referring to, he's always available there. Our customers, they're helping all the time. We put the local numbers so you don't have to call Avenue if you don't feel comfortable.
On the website, they should be able to do that on the website.
Yeah, and it's, yeah.
To find out what we were doing then that worked for everybody, and then what we're doing now that isn't working.
Right, correct.
Yes.
What's changed?
We got to figure that out.
Yeah, we.
Well, we're going to find out what's going on.
Right. So we, we transfer that to a third party, the database. And, yeah, we, I think there has been some glitches, but they're fixed right now. But if there's any issues, you can contact me.
It's fixed to where you can search anybody's permit, but it's not fixed to where I can log in.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, I, I'm just looking at it as I just hit the link on the page and it goes to Avenue Insights and Analytics, and it goes a simple and reliable way to register your business. And the first page that comes up is you enter in all your stuff and you hit next. And then you have to go to your type of business, you're in a ICS, the cities that you're doing business in, the counties you're doing business in, the tax types, the physical locations, notes, and then confirmation, and then registration complete. But that was just me going to myspi.org and it says, there's a page there that says steps for city compliance with HOT and short-term rentals. And then there's, number one, it says apply for Avenue Insight taxpayer account. And you click that button. And number two, it's a tax, Texas taxpayer ID for your state HOT. And then it's a SDR permit with Avenue Insight. And then, so maybe you. with Avenue Insight and then, so maybe you have to, I don't know, maybe you have to apply for each location to be a taxpayer account or maybe there's a login, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm just.
The easier we can make it, the better we'll get compliance.
Yeah, of course.
Okay. All right, is there anybody?
Tom Goodman, again, thank you very, a couple, a couple of points. Number one, I think, you know, process here that we're talking about, please, again, let us come into the table to deal with this particular issue because I think the bigger issue is getting people to comply, that's what we're trying to talk about here. I'm also part of Vacation Rental Managers Association International as are other members here and our members are associated required to be. We discuss and go to these meetings and understand there's plenty of better services out there that will help us to get people compliant and we'd like to have that conversation. That's an important part so we can, we can attribute. We, Texas Travel Alliance and other places have that. There's a lot better places that go out there to get compliant. The second question, comment here is to Ed, I'm sorry, but the question becomes, the Texas property code applies to properties that are being rented 30 days or longer. Is that correct or am I wrong in understanding that?
I don't believe that's correct.
It applies to any, any resident?
Not sure on that either.
No, because actually it has a revision in there that you, as a neighbor who's in a three-quarter mile radius can actually file suit against that neighbor within that, that has more than that occupancy and take them to court. It's very tedious and whatever, but it is, that is the, and that turned out because when Ed was reviewing certain cases, Austin, when they, when they took it to the appeals court, one of the items was brought up that there's already a relief in the Texas property code as established by law.
Section 92, 92.010 occupancy limits. The maximum number of adults that a landlord may allow to occupy a dwelling is three times the number of bedrooms in a dwelling. It doesn't speak to anything about 30 days or more or 30 days or less.
Okay, but from a landlord, I've always understood that the property code, 30-day or more rentals were different than short-term vacation rentals. And I mean, it's just, I'm not sure that that's an ordinance that, we'll have to look into that. I'm not sure that that's an ordinance that would apply to vacation rentals, though.
This, this would, would apply, but we could also do a city code.
Okay, we'll deal with it.
Based on that statement, are you supporting 10 adults per bedroom?
Oh, no, heck no.
Oh, okay, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out where you're going with this, of saying that, that doesn't apply.
Yeah, I just don't want people to think as we have this discussion that that's what we have to abide by.
I always know that you can abide, you can follow state law or you can be more strenuous than state law.
The problem with the state law is that it takes somebody to file an injunction or lawsuit, either a private resident, as the mayor mentioned, or the city, whereas the city code, you, you don't have to file a lawsuit, you could just issue a citation.
Most of your HOAs here all have occupancy limits as well, and so we're not going to deal with all of those.
And a big problem of ours is not so much the HOAs, it's the, the houses. And it's becoming one, you know, more on the B side again because a lot of properties have been sold recently and they've been turned into investment properties or whatever it may be, and so.
I'm in no way suggesting that we should be allowing huge.
Oh, yeah, I'm just.
Tom, I can get an answer for that tomorrow. Texas Realtors has a legal hotline available for us and I'm sure if I call tomorrow and ask them to explain that and, and answer that question, I can get an answer very quickly.
Thank you.
Bill?
I think you know what my complaint and my issue would be, and I, I still think we need to look at, I, I mean, for a property rental, like I have one next door, it has two parking spaces, but they'll have, for an occupancy, he advertises seven people, but he'll have five or six cars, which mean they're parking in the grass, not in the driveway. I wake up in the morning, I got two parked in my yard, not on the easement, in my yard because there's nowhere else for them to park. There should be some kind of limit. If you're only supposed to have seven people there, you don't need six cars.
No, and I agree with you. That's one of the big problems these other cities are, are dealing with, which is the parking and the overload of parking and, and that's one of those items that does go with short-term rentals. And so thank you for bringing that up.
I think that's something we need to look at.
Oh, for sure. I mean, and again, tonight's not here to start all of a sudden making rules or whatever, it's just to kind of open up the discussion and we put a possible action on there just in case there was something that came up and there was a light bulb in someone's head and you have it there so you don't have to wait two weeks or whatever it might be. But yes, no, parking is definitely a concern in, like the city of Mesquite, which again, it's not a short-term rental, but what they did is they made an ordinance where you can't park in your landscaped areas. And they put that in there and that would be a real simple solution.
Well, the city required that. When I was president of our, the condos I owned, the association, we couldn't park, we had a lot out back and we weren't allowed to park on it. The members couldn't put their boats there because it wasn't paved.
Part of your required landscape area, yeah.
It wasn't paved, so we had to pave it in order to do this, but I mean, if, that doesn't mean the same thing for a property owner.
I agree, and that's why we get to have these meetings and we allow the public to speak is so that we can come up with some concerns and variables and try to figure out what's best for, and how we solve that. And so thank you, no, thank you again, Bill, appreciate it. Is anyone else from the public want to stand up, speak or on any of the, about short-term rentals at this point in time? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the board and if we get into something and someone wants to discuss about or make a comment about what we're discussing up here, again, if you could just go back over to the tables over there and then I'll call on you when we, we get to that point, so. All right. Start left to right, right to left.
I just agree with a lot of the comments that we need to enforce what we have and, and go by what we have as an ordinance because I'm a firm believer in life that you can have as many laws and ordinances as you want, but if you can't enforce them or don't enforce them, they don't mean anything. So if you make a law or an ordinance, you need to be able to enforce it. If you can't enforce it, it's kind of a moot point.
So it sounds like from all this discussion and from the police chief and what they've said is that we need to put some teeth in it to where we can enforce it because right now, nine times out of 10, we're not getting the complainant to sign a document that says that this was an issue.
I don't know how I feel about making it a criminal charge and I would like to talk more about that if we come to that point, but I think we could do a better job of enforcing the ordinance that we have on the books.
The ordinance we have on the books will allow a ticket to go before municipal court. It's a municipal violation.
And let me clarify this criminal offense because any, all city code violations are punishable by a fine, they're all criminal offenses. It's not a civil penalty, like sometimes we'll do the substandard structure review board issue civil administrative penalties, but a fine, it's a criminal offense punishable by only a fine, just like a class C misdemeanor is a criminal offense punishable by a fine. A code violation is really a criminal offense that gets filed in municipal court, must be proven by beyond a reasonable doubt, not by a preponderance of the evidence, which is the burden of proof in civil cases. So I know the mayor was concerned about it being considered a criminal offense, but every violation in this, of a city code is a criminal offense. But, but our goal, our goal.
This is where we're getting into this confused area because the, the police feel like they have to have the offended party.
I'm going to speak on that.
Sign something.
So.
Speak about that.
Have the complainant involved in the ticket helps the court better, it helps the legality of proving it up when you have them come testify. It doesn't mean you can't do it, but then all the burden of proof falls on everything that the officer can articulate. Normally, when he's there, everyone's acting right. So he doesn't get to see it, he has to go off what the other person said.
So when the, when the three police cars show up, music goes off and everyone's like, hey, we're all good.
I've been to a lot of those calls and that's what happens. So you hope that the complainant will step up and when they don't step up, then it makes it harder to prove up, so the officer kind of gets a little frustrated and maybe he just hopes for complacency. And then that's where we go around. By the way, the people that you straightened up today, the next time a property's rented, those same people don't pass the word on, hey, the cops are going to be called. So we have to re-educate the next amount of people that show.
Got a different house or wherever it might be.
Constantly looking for complacency. And the bottom line is, and it goes back to basically like what Mr. Greenwood was referring to, at some time in point, if it's a problematic issue, you know, at one reoccurring house, then you got to go to the common denominator, which is going to be the property manager or owner and then get them to work on better complacency. Then I'll talk about the noise more when we get.
Yeah, when we get to the noise discussion.
All right. Joe?
I see three issues, at least where I get phone calls and emails. You know, the first one is amplification, we're going to talk about that later, so that's, we put that one aside. Where's Tom at? Still there? The other two issues we, I hear complaints about, and if your group wants to come, you know, obviously we're not going to solve anything tonight, but y'all want to visit and come back with some suggestions, the other two are occupancy and registration. That's what I get calls and emails and complaints about. I, I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but if you guys want to visit on that and come back and.
On that note, I would like, you know, them, that they have an organization together. I'd like to see what their thought process is.
That's what I'm asking, I want them to come back and.
Practice. So I would love for you all to meet, have a meeting of the minds and, because again, you know, you brought up the three or whatever and it could go either direction based on how you said it. I think that that would be a, a great idea for you all to meet and give us what you all think the best practices are for occupancy.
Absolutely. Occupancy and registration, that's what I. Yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
Parking issue, parking as well.
Well, it's tied to occupancy.
I was going to say occupancy ought to be amount of people, the vehicle, amount of vehicles and parking and trash.
They have an organization.
Trash cans and trash.
Let's let them come back and see what their thoughts are.
And we're not making this an official ad hoc committee or whatever, but you as an organization have gotten together with a large number of the rental companies and you experienced, y'all experienced this stuff day in day. And again, we're not experts on every single facet of the rental world or this world or that world. And so I think that, you know, again, great that you all formed an organization. I think that if, if you all take the time to present something, you know, and, and let us know what your thoughts are and then maybe that does get pulled into a short-term rental committee or maybe we all sit up there and say, hell, this is somewhat of a good idea or go through the ordinance process or whatever it might be. But I, I think that you all could take that resource and your knowledge and make best recommendations.
Thank you very much, we will, we will take that on.
Do it sooner than later, don't sit on it until December.
We do have, we do have summer going on, Mayor.
I know, I know. But the problem is, is that our phones are ringing off the hook this time of the year and not in December, so.
It is something we deal with, occupancy and, and it's something we deal with every day. I mean, we, we require the names of every individual, our agreements all say very clearly, no more than this many people that you have on this list can occupy this property.
No, and when I was in the rental, and when I was in the rental business, you know, we would hire security and give wristbands and do this and do that.
All of that, we deal with that every day.
Property management, I mean, I know there's a lot of facets to it, but I think there are biggest three problems, with the exception of the one that no one has talked about yet, which is commercial activity. Wedding parties, quinceañeras or whatever, where they take a 3,000 square foot house and they bring 150 people that aren't staying there.
Well, Mayor, to that.
And that, that's one of those other concerns that no one's brought up tonight in regards to that.
Well, to that end, I would also recommend that the city look at a small event venue registration ordinance of some kind or small event venue ordinance that would take smaller venues and have them have to apply for permits or other things in order to hold the quinceañeras.
Well, a lot of people are, a lot of cities are looking at parking and making them follow what the commercial parking rules are.
Sure.
And that sort of thing. But, you know, I know that there are people that rent their houses for, or companies that rent houses or whatever for those of, you know, that's also one of those concerns out there that it's bigger, you know, especially on some streets where the street's only 25 foot wide, there's no curb and gutter, and then 150 people showed up for a wedding.
One rolling trash can.
Yeah, and one, yeah, 150 gallon, 55 gallon trash can, you know, that's a, that's a unique area that we're running into.
We'll work on that and get back to you. Thank you.
Kim, this was your item, so.
You know, we were talking about that, I opened my mouth too soon and got invited out to those two functions, but it, it now is becoming real clear that the folks, one in particular, we all know here in this room, said, you know, I really don't want to sign a complaint because I know the guy that rents it and he's a good guy and I don't want him mad at me and this, that, the other, and I'm thinking, well, you can call me at 1:00 in the morning and get me over there to make a complaint for you. But I, I, I do feel, Tom, you all coming back to us with, with some, some ideas, you know, there's some smart guys that have been in this a long time.
And again, maybe this is hopefully educational to our residents that aren't here tonight but are watching this meeting, that you can call the complaint in, but it really helps us out that if you're affected by, and your quality of life is affected by a neighbor or whatever it might be, it really helps us out if you file that complaint and you sign that complaint. So then when the officer and, and our prosecutor takes it to court, he has evidence that's there and he has a witness account or whatever, because again, that, that's where we do get into this, but it takes all of us to work together on this. And, and so we ask the residents that are watching this or spread the word or do whatever it might be to, if you're going to call the police, please call the police, but we would really appreciate you following up with a signed complaint. Even if that signed complaint is the next day, I think they can come and fill out a signed complaint to the city. They say, hey, you know, I called this and here is this, whatever, if there's a case number, I don't know how that works, but.
Or at least identify yourself so there's a witness that can be contacted at a later date.
Yeah, so anyway, that, that helps, you know, again, we talked about this in April. Here we are in, in July and, you know, so, but I think that's, the biggest complaint right now is going to be noise, so I'm going to close this item and we'll move into, unless someone has action that they would like to make. All right, hearing none, then I'm going to move into discussion of possible action regarding the noise complaint and compliance required by chapter 12, article one, section 12 dash two of the city code, because that's really what we're talking about right now is the noise, or we were talking about is the noise issue and that requiring that signature. Again, we don't have an occupancy issue, I mean, we have an occupancy issue potentially in some places, but we don't have an ordinance regarding the occupancy. And we don't have maybe an ordinance, we'll have to do some research about people parking in the yards and this and that. And so I'm going to, again, open this up, we'll follow the same method. We'll let council kind of talk about a couple of things and then if anybody here in the audience would like to speak on this matter, if they could line up over here to the right, we'll be, you know, we'll call on you and then if we move somewhere or whatever, then, you know, and they feel like somebody wants to speak, then we'll bring, bring that area open up again. Okay? So, Ken, this is your item again, so I will let you open up and then if any council members like to add anything, then that would be great.
Well, you know, I've kind of explained that I've, I've visited the, the two venues and it was noise and it was people and the parking and, you know, there's a lot of variables. The, the number of cars at the second event that there was, I could, probably over 100 people, they were parking in vacant lots. Well, that maybe, that might belong to the person that owns the house and they allowed them to park in the, in the vacant lot, but it was the noise. And we've got people living on the side or say across the alleyway and at 1:30 in the morning, it's rock and roll, you know, you, you know, the gray area, if, if the person will not sign the complaint, well, I think we're back to kind of where we started.
Okay. Eva Jean, you have anything to add?
Well, not all noise comes from short-term rentals. I just want to throw that out there.
Well, that's why, that's, that's why this is not, this is a separate.
I just want to throw that out there, that there are other ways that people are affected by the noise ordinance, but again, I, I think we need to enforce it. And I think it might be easier to enforce than some of the other things with the short-term rentals because if somebody's having a party or the music's loud, when somebody calls, like if I was to call on something, somebody's not going to know I called, the music is probably still going to be loud by the time the police, whoever's enforcing it gets there.
Usually they see those lights and things happen really quickly. But yes, again, that's why I had mentioned when we broke it out into two different, two different line items, is because it's not just going to be for short-term rentals, it's for everybody. Joe? Uh, Joe, you have something to say now, or you wouldn't like the public speak or?
Public.
All right, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on noise? Good to see you, Stephanie. If you could please state your name.
Stephanie Wilson.
Thank you.
I just want to point out that in the times when I have called about noise, they um will say, do you want officer contact after they've talked to the people or whatever? Which I've said yes, but um they've never asked me to sign a complaint.
I could talk about that.
Well, and, and I want, first of all, our police chief started vacation in Ireland. Got there at 4:00 AM this morning, our time. And, and she, uh, she's been watching this meeting the whole time. And, and so she says she understands that and, and that, that is going to be part of, 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 of a new process.
Okay.
To make sure that, that we're following up on that side of things.
Okay.
And so we do appreciate her um.
Stephanie.
Her participation via Ireland or whatever, whatever that might be. So thank you for being on vacation and, and still paying attention, chief. Uh, anybody else from the public want to uh say anything regarding noise ordinance for all of the residential areas, short-term or not short-term use? All right, Joe, if you want to say anything now or? Yeah, oh, okay.
Because, because we do address this issue also and have to deal with this issue from a short-term vacation rental standpoint, I know that there are certain companies and other things and methods out there. We will also add this to our discussion and recommendation list as well. Thank you.
Yeah, my thought process is that, that we just need to pick a time where we say no amplified music. And, you know, or a decibel, you know, whatever it might be, 94 or whatever. And, and, and look at that item. I don't think we need to action on it right now, but I, I, I do think that, that we should look at that and figure out what the proper level is or what the proper times are or what, whatever it might be. Um, but that's where my thought process is, but I definitely think that there could be additions to the ordinance that makes it a little bit more clearer and a little bit more enforceable on it. So the one that's causing all the problems, I think everyone's got worn out on the first item. So um, I'm guessing with, with that, then uh we're going to close that item, unless there's somebody who wants to make a, a, a motion. Okay, hearing none. We're going to close 5.3 now.
Mayor, can I?
So if y'all are all wanting to leave now, I guess it's okay. But anyway, yes.
I wanted to kind of clarify some of the issues that we, we were talking about. Um, about, first of all, Randy, I mean, the city manager had hit it right on the nose about a complaint is really not necessary. It will strengthen your case because you have a witness. But it's equivalent to somebody going out on the beach with a glass on the beach or a litter complaint or a weedy lot. So you don't need somebody to file a complaint. Code enforcement itself can, is the witness. In your typical noise case, as Ms. Wilson will know, um, somebody calls the police department. They're dispatched to a certain specific location. As the city manager has stressed and throughout all, all the time I've known him, they, they try to reach compliance. Uh, and some people here have said, well, maybe it's time to start finding people as opposed to just reaching compliance. But what happens is PD rolls on the street. Um, most of the time they shut their lights off and they, they, they roll up slowly to the residence and they themselves can hear the noise and, and give an opinion that yes, that is excessive. As Randy has mentioned though, having a witness or having complaint uh would help your case in court because you have not just an officer giving his opinion, but you have maybe an objective or a resident also testifying or giving a statement. But the filing of a written complaint is not necessary in that scenario. It's just like it's not necessary for a weedy lot or a glass on the beach or any other type of city code violation. So uh it just helps the case. It's not a theft case where you need a complaint in that that property was taken without my permission. Uh, it just strengthens your case. And again, regarding compliance, I think that's the goal of the city uh that it's always been. Um, I don't hear, as municipal judge, I don't hear city code cases or city ordinance cases to avoid any type of conflict of interest. I pretty much hear criminal cases, sometimes traffic cases. But in my seven or eight years, I have not seen one noise, uh, noise ordinance violation come to court. As Mr. Greenwood has stressed, I don't, I don't think there's been many fines, if any. Again, that's because the city has always stressed compliance. When PD does show up, the music gets turned down and the situation is taken care of. But um maybe the board or, or the committee can, can, you know, should, should think about, maybe it's time to find people for at least habitual offenses. Um, because then maybe they'll get somebody's attention. But compliance is the goal of the city at all times and, and that's what's really been done. But my main point was to kind of try to clarify or explain that a written complaint, in my opinion, is, is not necessary to file a, file a case in municipal court. It just helps the case because you have a witness that's identified and that could be called, uh, but, but not necessary. I'm sorry to interrupt, Mayor.
Oh, no, that's great. And, you know, I'm going to tell the chief to, it's almost 12 or 11 o'clock there so she can go to sleep. But she said she'll, um, she'll pull some uh reports up for us and maybe we'll just have a little presentation at the next meeting. Because I guess there are, you know, there have been fines and there have, or there have been citations and that sort of thing. And, and so just for transparency for everybody, we'll, we'll try to get a report in the next, not the next meeting, but the following meeting. So anyway. All right, now we'll move on to 5.4, which is discussion of possible action to approve resolution number 22 dash 10 prohibiting. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, we pulled that one. We're going to 5.5, discussion and action to approve the budget amendment for general funds, excess reserves of $570,225 to purchase city vehicles from various departments. Rodrigo, I had a laugh about this one, but um, as it was explained, me, or, or Alex, is that we've tried to order vehicles and we're still waiting for them. And so now we're trying to get ahead and order more vehicles, which I guess is what we need to do. So go ahead and, and give us our presentation, please, sir.
Uh, Mayor, City Council, uh, good afternoon. Alex Sanchez-Polo Works Director. Um, I'm sorry they didn't have the package, uh, but we got the last.
If, excuse me, if we could, if we could try to keep the conversation outside so we can continue our work, we appreciate that. Thank you. All right, go ahead.
We just got the last quote on yesterday, so I didn't have that package ready for you. And um, so as you know, the newer the vehicles, the less maintenance you're going to have on them. And we have a spreadsheet that kind of determines which cars we need to replace. Uh, of course, this is an old one, but uh it just gives you an idea of what spreadsheet is. So right now, we're looking at um vehicles uh from two different funds. And um, so we've got a couple of motorcycles, a couple of uh, uh, SUVs and a, a transfer of a dump truck to Pellet Works. And then we got Shoreline needs a new garbage truck and a UTV and ATV and uh three vehicles for Beach Rescue. So all in all, uh, based on uh the estimated, or the quotes, we needed 282,225 uh from the general fund and the beach fund, 298,000 for that fund. Um, on the agenda, if you can maybe uh do an addendum or a.
Yeah, we're going to have to alligate them from which funds we're talking about because.
Right, but, but we just got the last quote, so it's $10,000 more from what the agenda item.
All right, and which one is that one, for beach funds or for general funds?
From the general funds.
Is the general fund and the beach fund the same fund or is there actually separate accounts for it, Rodrigo?
These amounts we have here are the right amounts or some amounts?
No, we need.
Those amounts you have now, those are the right amounts.
Okay.
All right, so what you're looking for is a motion to approve 282,225 from the um, general fund excess reserves and then 298 from the beach fund excess.
That's correct.
Thousand, okay.
And yes, and if we order them tomorrow, we probably see them in 2023.
Right, right, which is our problem, is that we're having to like authorize this now in order to, like, some of the stuff that we authorized last year, at the same time, we still haven't gotten.
That's correct.
And so, and then some people have found some stuff and whatever it might be. Thank you, Sergeant. Uh, he, he's standing back here to make sure it's all going to happen. So anyway, um, is there a motion to approve the 282,20, 225 and the 298 from the required funds?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any discussion, people?
Who, who picked out this bike for 35 grand? Is this Mike?
We can speak, I can speak on the bike.
Please do, because I've, I've got two.
First of all.
18, 424. And then it's all the, the other stuff that goes along with it.
Yeah, the, the equipment.
Putting it.
Equipment for the bikes are expensive. I don't want to speak to having an absolute commitment. We want to put this money in a docked area and take a look at getting in placement for the upcoming motorcycles, which takes a while to get those in order. In the meantime, we do have a certified sales guy that we talked to. We missed opportunities in the past because we just didn't pull the trigger. And we're trying to see, but sometimes you can get an almost used one for way less. And so we are going to try and do that, so we may have some savings there. I can't commit to that because they don't have any on the market right now. But before our order comes in, if that market comes true, we'll have a significant savings in that area. Those bikes are, they're not, they're not cheap. And our current bikes, we can't even, um, we, they have a shelf life and it's about to play out. We're going to have to probably park them before we can even get the new ones possibly.
Here's what's wild, is the motorcycle's $18,424 for a 2021 highway, uh, Harley-Davidson electric rod. But then we got to add $16,176 in emergency equipment and labor to the motorcycle to make it official. So that, that's where they got, so that gets you to 34,600.
The equipment is specialized and it, it, it's significant to those vehicles. You can't take the old equipment and move them over to the new.
I mean, they did a great job itemizing.
For a few years, but our bikes are 2006s. You can't, you can't take that equipment and move those. Our sevens, 2007s maybe.
Well, we have a motion, a second. Is there anyone else who would like to ask any questions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
We're going to stay up there because you got 5.6, which is discussion and action to authorize the city manager to enter contract with Cornet for Laguna Boulevard 12-inch AC water line adjustments with a cost of $376,100.
Yes, uh, this is a water line adjustment for Laguna Boulevard. Uh, there's a couple of water lines that are in conflict with the storm drain system. Uh, there's around five to seven that go through existing manholes. And then the rest of them are for new storm drains crossing Laguna. Um, they are 13 adjustments that need to be done or four catches to be done. And then um, we got the two uh water vaults that, that are going to be relocated over here in the, between Constellation and uh Capricorn. And uh, but the average cost for each relocation is 22,000 each and the two vaults each is 17,500.
And to kind of just for letting the public understand is that we knew the water lines were going through the storm drains, but we were waiting on um Laguna Madre Water District to tell us all the connections and parts and all this stuff that they wanted us to provide in order to relocate those water lines out of, out of the sewer boxes.
Right, and those.
And then we're relocating some sewer boxes and then that's where the water line is. And so we run into that problem, correct?
That's correct. And then we, and we didn't get that uh final detail until we bid, uh, the, the bid was in for.
We didn't get that final detail until like three months ago.
Right, something like that.
Yeah, after, you know, yeah.
So.
But you know, the good news is if we had a water break when it was going through the storm box, at least we'd had a place for that water to collect and, and drain out to on a, on a low tide day. So.
So uh, we bid it out, uh, we did it for a month and we only got one bidder. Uh, Cornet is the only bidder.
That makes sense since they're doing all the work for Laguna Madre.
That's correct.
All right, anybody else have any questions?
Motion to approve.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. All right, next up is item number 5.7, which is discussion of possible action to approve the amended McAllen Parade sponsorship agreement. Blake, if you want to come up here real quick and introduce yourself. I was hoping that we'd have more audience members here to, so that you could introduce yourself to, especially since they were in the short-term rental program. But uh, they'll have, they'll have their chance tomorrow, so.
Absolutely. Uh, good evening, Mayor.
Welcome to South Padre Island. This is what, 10 days on the, no, you have eight days on the job.
Eight days. You haven't run me off yet and loving every minute of it. So everybody's been really welcoming and I appreciate it. Thank you. I uh, I support this initiative. Uh, I believe that it, it brings additional advertising and marketing and, and public relations opportunities uh to us. Um, and also strengthens our relationship with the city of McAllen and also gives us the opportunity to present SPI in other cities as well. So I support the initiative. That's a limited knowledge that I know about, uh, the sponsorship agreement. I have Lori here uh to, to answer any additional questions. I'm here seven days. I, I came from Louisville, Kentucky, where I ran their convention center for many years uh and marketed Louisville as a destination, bringing large groups to town and generated millions in uh economic impact. I'm really excited to be here. I, I, I love this town and I'm happy to call SPI my new home. And I look forward to working with everyone to uh, to drive visitorship to our island.
I actually.
I'm not, but I look forward to doing that yet.
I actually attended this event with Lori and Teresa, uh, because I'm, um, lived in the McAllen area.
The, the traveling float, not so much.
Yes, yes. Oh, okay, the traveling float. But, but being there, I know was very positive. I mean, all, the, the big uh screen showing the South Padre Island video. I mean, people were very excited. I would say it was very, very, very positive, in my opinion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Anybody else have any other discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I do. I kind of, I kind of reluctantly, I was talking with Mr. Henry and uh the parade. I like the TV ads, English and Spanish, but since our mayor has agreed to ride on the float in San Antonio and Banderas, Texas, good or bad weather, I'll, I'll, I'll vote for it.
Well, you know, Ken, I'll just make sure that I bring you along, so. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I would like the record to note that that motion did not require me to go. It was just Ken's suggestion. All right, with no other items on this. It's not on the agenda. All right, with no other, oh, no other items that can be heard tonight, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming and we appreciate it very much. Yeah.